And we are now live, so we do not have mayor or mayor pro tem, so we need to ask council. Okay, first and foremost, the meeting of the city of Socorro, city council is set to begin. The city of Socorro would like to thank everyone and ask for your patience during this difficult time we have been presented with. Everyone, please remember to silence any electronics to avoid sound interruption. No disruptive behavior or outbursts will be tolerated and violators are subject to called disconnection and possible prosecution. In accordance with section 418.016 of the Texas government code and by order of the office of the governor issued March 16, 2020, the city council of the city of Socorro will broadcast the meeting scheduled today, Thursday, October 1st, 2020 at 6:00 p.m. from City Hall chambers located at 860 Rio Vista Road, Socorro, Texas via telephone conference and live stream in order to advance a public health call and practice social distancing to slow the spread of coronavirus COVID-19. The public that signed up and any presenters will be called upon by the presiding officer during the meeting to speak during the public comment or their agenda item during the meeting following government code 551.042.
La reunión del Consilio de las Ciudades Socorro está por empezar. Primeramente queremos darles las gracias y pedimos su paciencia durante esos momentos críticos que enfrentamos. Les pedimos que pongan en silencio todo equipo electrónico para evitar interrupción de sonido. No se va a tolerar ningún tipo de comportamiento perjudicial o revoltoso. A quien nos siga estas reglas su llamada será desconectada y puede ser infraccionado. De acuerdo con sección 418.016, el código del gobierno de Texas y por orden de la oficina del gobernador anunciado el 16 de marzo de 2020/20, el Consilio de las Ciudades Socorro transmitirá la reunión hoy jueves 1º de octubre de 2020/20 a las 6:00 p.m. desde la sala del Consilio ubicados en 860 Rio Vista Road, Socorro, Texas, por medio de conferencia telefónica y será transmitida en vivo para avanzar el objetivo de salud pública y practicar el dictamiento social para tomar medidas preventivas para prevenir la propagación del coronavirus COVID-19 a los demás y por la seguridad del público. El público y los presentadores serán anunciados por el oficial conduciendo la reunión para poder hablar durante la sección del comentario público después de la discusión del artículo de la agenda por cual se apuntaron siguiendo las reglas del gobierno 551.042.
614, the meeting is now called to order. Mr. Ralte, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes ma'am, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Arrow number three, establish on the forum.
Rene Rodríguez.
Aye.
Cesar Nevárez is absent, Ralph Duran. Ralph Duran.
I'm.
Mayor Eliá García.
Here.
Victor Pérez.
Here.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos. Ms. Villalobos.
Here, here. Here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Every other speaker, public comment.
Mayor, we have a speaker for public comment. Miriam Cruz.
Hello. I wanted to start off by mentioning that I am thankful to the city staff for continuing to move the city along during the pandemic. I think it's actually very admirable that we continue to have meetings and in a pretty efficient way. There are so many things that are still getting done. One of those being like the art that's going around town. I've always been a fan of public art that's displayed where many in the public can view it and some of these things coming out are just fantastic. Like the recent one that was in Moon City Park. I also wanted to thank Lieutenant Smith for making sure that everything was in order at St. Peter and Paul's First Food Dispensary this past Monday. It's the first of many that are going to continue and so we're thankful that he was there to make sure of that. I also wanted to thank Chief Burden for keeping us informed of the many police activities that are going on in the city. I believe that that helps the constituents and people living here, you know, stay up to date with what's going on. And I think we all appreciate that. I also wanted to mention that as a constituent that I appreciate all of the posts that are put on social media to try and gather more information or to share that information in a more wide, in a more widely way, to reach the masses in a better way. But one of the things that I would like to mention, as many things with social media, is that many things can get lost because of the algorithms of these social medias. And one of the things that I'm still pushing for is that there be a calendar placed in the city website. So therefore it's a little bit more organized about when all the meetings are taking place and whatever events and other events that are taking place are more, are better viewed in a more succinct way that people can click on them rather than scrolling through an entire social media post to try and find different things. I've been talking about a calendar for a while now. I'm still hoping that the city can come up with a calendar on the city website to better provide all the information to the constituents. That's it, thank you.
Mayor, those were all our speakers.
Moving on to consent agenda, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Rene Rodríguez.
Aye.
Cesar Nevárez is absent, Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Pérez.
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Arrow number 10, public hearing of ordinance number 477, amendment number two, amendment to increase revenue by $400,000 and decrease expenditures by $73,343 this year 2019-2020.
Make a motion to approve.
Public hearing, it's a public.
Public hearing. 619, public hearing is now open. Is there anybody on the line?
No, mayor.
619, public hearing is now closed. Arrow number 11, second reading and adoption of ordinance number 477, amendment number two, amendment to increase revenue by $400,000 and decrease expenditures by $73,343 this year 2019-2020.
Make a motion to approve for discussion.
Second.
Rene Rodríguez.
Aye.
Cesar Nevárez is absent. Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Pérez.
We're not having a little bit of an overview or just a, for public comment, I mean I thought for, just for recap, no?
Yes sir, I think we just moved too quickly. I think the motion was made for discussion and they just started taking the vote. Okay, so.
Go ahead.
Okay, so as part of your backup, I do give out an explanation of what we're doing with every department. The reason you're seeing the increase in revenues is because we have received about $400,000 more on the revenue side that we weren't accounting for. And that's based on the building permits due to all of the housing that we're seeing. In the explanation, you'll see under the planning and zoning that we have increased the budget for building permits and that's just a pass-through cost that's coming in through the developer. And it's being paid out through the revenue side, right? We're receiving revenue because we're issuing out these permits. And that's what you're seeing. Some departments increased, some departments decreased. A lot of the impact was due to the COVID. We didn't have enough trainings or, you know, we couldn't do much, so a lot of those departments decreased. I don't know if you have a specific question on one of the line items, but pretty much I can just go through each department. So for the city manager, we increased the amount by $49,120 and we decreased it by $22,000. The public works department was increased by $38,900 on some of the categories and we decreased some of the categories by $106,200. Then we have the fire and ambulance where we had to make adjustments and we had to increase the budget just by $215 and that was some repairs that the vineyard station needed. For the police department, we do have that we increased their budget by $94,000 and we decreased it by $170,000. Then we have our planning and zoning department. I'm sorry, I missed the municipal courts. We increased by $6,700 and decreased it by $6,800. Our planning and zoning department was increased by $293,300 and decreased by $53,200. And the huge increase there was the building permits that we're seeing, that's why we're raising the revenue side of it. The grants department, we increased by $10, decreased by $19,000. Our HR department was increased $4,000 and decreased by $15,000. The $4,000 is for the, all of the new hiring that's happening at PD. So we had to increase that amount, the psychological and the polygraphs are a little expensive. Mayor and council, we actually only decreased the budget by $46,500. Some of it is District 3 does not receive a salary nor Mr. Nevárez or Mr. Pérez receive benefits. So we decreased the budget there. For the city clerk, we increased it by $2,000 and, I'm sorry, increased by $2,000, decreased by $48,000. Our recreations department was increased $4,700 and it was decreased by $74,000. Our IT department increased $850 and was decreased by $20,000. So the total decrease was $73,343. Do you all have any questions?
No, that's good for the public to hear. Thank you.
Mr. Pérez, your vote?
Holiday, aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos. Ms. Villalobos.
Yes.
Arrow number 12, public hearing of an ordinance of the city of Socorro, Texas amending exhibit C to ordinance number 492, calling for an election regarding amendments to the city charter. 6:25, public hearing is now open.
Mayor, we do have a speaker for this item, Miriam Cruz. Ms. Cruz.
Hi, as part of my public comment, I'd like to state that I'm not really sure how having a public hearing, but I have to sign up for the items beforehand, is actually having a public hearing. I'm not sure what else can be done to make sure that people are able to call in even if it were last minute because that's what people could do if they were there in person to show up. But anyway, that's just a thought.
But anyway, that's just a thought. Um, that's something that, that some of the commissions do check, uh, before they, they close the public hearing. Um, in regards to this one, um, I'm hoping that during the presentation, if there is one or one is allowed by the council, um, that there's an explanation or, or more specifics, uh, about what the actual amendments are. I was looking at the backup and it, I don't think it was 100% clear. I know that sometimes council appreciates and I definitely would appreciate, I'm sure the public would appreciate if things were either highlighted or, uh, in red ink. Um, I was trying to look for that. If it is there, uh, my bad, I didn't see it. Um, but if it's not, um, if those things can be pointed out about what exactly was the difference. If there was only one wording, which I, I'd be surprised if this entire amendment be done for this one thing. Um, then I don't actually think that it's necessary that it be done and maybe it just needs to be scratched off, uh, the ballot. Um, um, because there may have not been enough notice to the public to be able to comment on this item. One of which is the, uh, if it's the only one that I'm assuming is the, the three consecutive terms. Um, I'm not really sure, uh, that the public has been able to, to, to comment on that. Um, and on that specific thing. Um, granted, you guys helped many meetings with many amendment charters, but many times, if, if I was there at those meetings, those were postponed. And I was ready with my own comment, um, to be fed at those meetings. And I don't know if other people were or were not, but that can be a little, um, it, it can keep people from coming back, um, and, and providing those comments if you guys kept pushing that back. Granted, now you have 28 propositions on the, on the ballot, which is great. It's, it's better than none. Um, as we all know, that, that there were some real amendments that needed to be on there. Um, but, you know, it, it's just, it's, it's a little frustrating that I was at some of those meetings where those things are supposed to be discussed and because it was just such a long meeting, it was postponed for, for the next time and postponed for the next time and postponed for the next time. And so, um, I just want to share that concern from my side, uh, personally. And, and I don't know if there was other people from the public who would have wished to have made more comments about this item. And so my, my only comment will be, you know what? If it wasn't done right, maybe it just needs to get scratched and waited, uh, it needs to wait until the next time. Thank you.
No more speakers, Mayor.
And just to double check, there's nobody on the line, correct?
Correct.
629, Public Hearing is now closed. Item number 13, Second Reading and Adoption of an Ordinance of the City of Socorro, Texas, Amending Exhibit C to Ordinance Number 492, Calling for an Election Regarding Amendments to the City Charter.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Go ahead, Jim.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, may I?
Jim Martinez?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and Council, Jim Martinez, if you look at the backup material, it's the, it's a very short ordinance amendment. As you know, council went through a series of meetings over the last year and a half and change to try and address some, some proposed charter changes. And if you do recall, we kind of restarted the process in, in January of this year and, and made it a more orderly process, a more systematic process. And we drafted it and it's a lengthy ordinance. You have to call the charter election by ordinance and the ordinance has to contain the proposed changes. We did that. It's a very long ordinance. They could did a good job. I will admit to you, there's an error. There's one error in it and it was mine. And it's just, for, for whatever reason...
The first one this year.
Yeah, instead of the, the two consecutive terms being the limit or instead of the three being the limit that was discussed at multiple council meetings that the council took public input on, that the council instructed us to include, for whatever reason, I wrote two. And so I figured that out at some point. And because it is an ordinance to correct it, you have to have an ordinance amendment. So this is that ordinance amendment. It's the only change. Everything else is the same. If you go back and look at the specific proposition, it's Proposition Number Nine.
Mayor, and I just wanted to add, the two meetings at this, um, information was discussed was the February 6th and February 20th of 2020.
Hello, Mayor.
Jim Perez?
Uh, Jim, is there a specific, since I made the motion to approve, is there a specific, uh, wording that, that has to go along with it?
No, the, or, the, it's like any other ordinance, if you, if the council adopts it, the entirety of the ordinance is effective.
Okay, thank you.
Renee Rodriguez? Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah, before, before I say something, uh, before I do my vote, um, we just want to stress out and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong. We can't just scratch a word or two or a sentence or a phrase in our ordinance, correct? Because state says that we have to amend it and take it to the public. Or am I wrong?
Yeah, well, yes and no. But let me say this about that. The, the answer is yeah, you can't, you can literally scratch a word out. You can literally change the punctuation so long as it's done in the format of an ordinance amendment. And that requires an introduction, a public hearing, or I'm sorry, an introduction, a publication, a public hearing, and then the ultimate vote and the adoption.
Yeah, and that was my point, is that we can't just go out and scratch it just because. So that's why we're doing all of this, because we have to make the adequate changes. That's all I have to say. So, aye.
Cesar Nevades is absent. Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Yes.
Item number 14, Discussion on Action to Ratify a Letter of Support for the Lower Valley Water District's Grant Application to the Fiscal Year 2021 Regional Solid Waste Program.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, this is Alejandro Valdez, Grants Coordinator. Uh, this is a request to ratify a letter of support for the Lower Valley Water District's grant application to the FY 2021 Regional Solid Waste Program. The Lower Valley Water District is requesting funding for up to three, um, joint community cleanup projects with the City of Socorro, um, here in Socorro, Texas. Um, so we are asking for your approval to provide our support for that grant application.
Renee Rodriguez?
Yes, we've done this in the past and we will continue to do this in the future. Aye.
Cesar Nevades is absent. Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Yes.
Item number 15, Discussion on Action to Allocate $10,000 to Offset Cost of Three Community Cleanup and Tire Amnesty Events During the Fiscal Year 2020-2021 Fiscal Year and Maximize Additional Funding Received from Grants.
Motion to approve discussion.
Second.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, this is a discussion and action to allocate $10,000 for our community cleanups and tire amnesty events in the upcoming fiscal year. As I mentioned, we are going, um, after grants and other types of funding to offset the costs of, uh, picking up the tires and the tire recycling fees as well as the landfill fees for all of the bulk waste that is picked up during these community cleanup, cleanups. Um, the $10,000 will be used to maximize that grant funding that we do receive in order to get as many tires picked up and as, as much, uh, waste, um, to the landfill as possible during these events. Do you have any questions?
Mayor, keep muting yourself. Right there, you, you're right there, you're...
I already called out Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes, um, we, like I said, we, this is another, another, uh, project that we do with our neighbors, with other agencies and, you know, this is great for our city, so, aye.
Cesar Nevades is absent. Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Yes.
Item number 16, Discussion on Action on Approving a Memorandum of Understanding Jurislima del Surpueblo Department of Public Safety for the Installation of the Socorro Police Agency's Frequencies and Encryption Codes on the YDSP Communication System. This document would allow interoperable communication between both agencies on incidents requiring law enforcement and/or emergency response coordination. Approve the Chief of Police to sign the memorandum.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, Dave Burton, Chief of Police. Uh, this is a pretty, uh, standard type, uh, operation between emergency dispatch centers. This just comes in as a permission letter, um, but, uh, his letter sent me the, um, MOU to sign. So, uh, what I was looking for was approval, uh, to sign on the city's behalf. Um, what this would do is place, uh, our channels on their system, uh, in the name of interoperable communications then. We would be able to reach out and they, in return, uh, if they would be able to contact us directly on the radio. That saves time as far as phone calls, uh, because that's how we do it right now. If we need, um, response from them or if they need response from us. And seeing as we share, um, ambulance service as well, uh, it can certainly improve, uh, that capability because we can offer information over the radio directly to their emergency dispatch center. Uh, it is an open-ended, um, agreement, uh, but we can cancel it, uh, on either end so long as we provide 60-day notice. And any questions?
Renee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevades is absent. Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Yes.
Item number 17, Discussion on Action on the Preliminary and Final Platte Approval for Vias de Socoros Subdivision, Being All of Tracks 13B and 18, Block 12 and Tracks 1, 3A and 3C, Block 27, Socorro Grants for a New Development. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Uh, Joke de Raza's Planning and Zoning Department. Uh, this, this is a, an application for a new subdivision. Uh, last week, we met with a developer, uh, this, this, uh, subdivision is located off of Socorro Road. So what they're doing here is they're adding, uh, 34 lots to the platte that was previously approved. We met with a developer to talk about a potential issue with the entrance to Friolgin. And we came up with a solution to the problem. I'm gonna share it on the screen here real quick. First of all, what you have on the screen right there, this is the preliminary platte. And as you can see, uh, now there's a connection to the roadways from Ernest to Friolgin. And then they're adding the additional pond. So now here is the... This is the final platte. And then this is the solution that we came up with. What is going on right here is the road is going to be narrowed from 40 feet. The subdivision roads are designed according to the subdivision design standards. So the problem is on Friolgin, the, the, the road that is paved is only 24 feet wide. So what they're doing here is they're gonna do this little, uh, bottleneck, bottleneck kind of transition on the northern part. But what's gonna happen here is they're gonna end the sidewalk right here and the curb right before hitting the end of the subdivision. The reason for that is because if they continue with the curb, the way that it's proposed, it's gonna impede the passage through this property. Right now, uh, according to a conversation that we had with the, the developer, this property here, uh, has not been sold. The reason for that is because he's still negotiating, uh, the property, abutting the subdivision for a potential replat. So in the future, this could probably be replatted and then the sidewalk could be continuous. So in the meantime, what we're asking, and this is an agreement we had with a developer out in the field, uh, we're asking him to put some reflective markers as you enter the subdivision, some striping on the north and put some signs to make the public aware that the road is going to narrow as they exit the subdivision. There's gonna be stop signs here and here. And then there's gonna be sidewalks and the curb is going to end on this radius. This is something that we consulted with our engineers, with the city engineers. And this is what they recommend also. This is the best solution. And then on the transition, they're going to remove the asphalt all the way to this, uh, point of curvature. And they're going to repave all this area to realign with the new road. So that took care of the pending red marks that were left. And all the documents that were pending were submitted. We have all the information that we need and no further problems were found with this subdivision.
Mr. Perez?
Thank you. Uh, question, uh, in terms of, and I apologize, my, my dog is trying to get into a conversation. Um, in terms of the, of the reflective, uh, markers, couldn't we do, um, the vertical, um, markers like you see, um, along, uh, the exit from Loop 375 to America? Or the, the markers that you see, uh, as you exit Loop 375 down to the target area, the target, uh, uh, shopping center area? They're, they're, they're sticks, so that's, but they're posts and they're, and they've got reflective, uh, reflective surfaces on them. Uh, because I, that, I think that would, to me, that would work better. I, just, uh, an opinion.
That's, that's something that we have to see, um, and consult with the, with the city engineer to see if this is something that is approved by the NUTCD. The reflective markers, the raised markers are sufficient, but we will look into that definitely.
My, my, and I, and I say that only because, um, a unfortunate people in, in our area, I, I, oh, no, there, there's some, not everybody. Some people like to see and, um, that would make it, uh, a, if, if there's not something like, like a rumble strip type of setting or just having those, uh, posts there, um, I, I think it could turn into a, a, a safety issue. That, again, that's, and that's me being untrained in all this, but I, I, I see the potential for that.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Turan?
Okay, this, this, is this a temporary fix until the property behind it gets, uh, approved for, for development?
So let me, uh, show you the screen here real quick. Uh, the problem here is that the, the width of the pavement on the older subdivision does not match the width of the new subdivision. Um, the problem that we were looking at here was going to be with the sidewalks. So what you see here on this part, this is only temporary until the developer is able to acquire this property and replat it. But this, th- this is something that will probably remain for some time until either in the future the pavement is expanded or something is done on the older part of the subdivision.
And just a follow-up question. Um, let's just say that they do expand, um, Ernest in the future. Will the city be responsible for, um, redoing all of this mess or will the builders be responsible?
So when. Let me put up the screen again. If the developer comes back with a replat of these two tracks or these two lots. He would be responsible to create and extend the sidewalk and the curbs all the way to this point. From here on, it becomes. The city's responsibility to realign everything else. Including up to the transition up to this point.
Mayor, we do have two speakers for this item. Miriam Cruz.
Ms. Cruz?
Hi, I wanted to mention some, hi, I wanted to mention something that came up in the. Planning and zoning commission, which is something that I actually thought about when I saw this coming back to city council. I believe that this was the subdivision that was supposed to allow for baseball fields, a large baseball field or many baseball fields. To be in place and I know for whatever reason, that's not going to happen anymore. As a constituent. I am really tired of hearing that we don't have the manpower to clean up the parks. If that's the issue, then you hire more manpower. We don't say no to parks. It's really frustrating to hear that and I'm gonna say this to Mr. Rodriguez because he is the person who says this the most. At, at most of the meetings is that there is not enough. That there is not enough manpower to take care of the parks. And so it's, it's, it's just not okay. It's not okay. That's not the quality of life that people in Socorro should get used to or continue to live. Just because we don't want to plan for those parks. It's not fair to them. It, it's not fair to, it's not fair to anyone. So I hope that that is something that you consider as this is something that is different from what was originally proposed. Thank you.
Enrique Escobar?
I'm just here to answer any questions.
Mr. Rodríguez?
Mr. I have a question for Mr. Escobar. Is this, I don't remember having this baseball fields. Did it have baseball field before?
What we had is we had offered the city, if they wanted to acquire the land for, in order to apply for future grants. We had designed some baseball fields just to show as an illustration what could go in there. But the subdivision itself was not gonna build them. It was just because we have that additional land that we had offered it to the city. But under review, we understand that there's a park a hundred yards away. So the city is requiring us to pay the park fees in order for you to use it to enhance that park and the connection to this neighborhood.
So my, so my other question is, this, this plan didn't, was brought up to us, right? Or it was just on the planning and zoning commission?
No, it was just a suggestion in, in, in the preliminary design.
Okay. So in other words, anybody can come up here and just say, you know, fictitious lies that it was brought up to us and we shut it down. Thank you, sir. So my question, Mayor, is this, is that we are understaffed and that's the truth. We have a ten million dollar budget. Our MNO is seventy-three percent. For the people that don't understand, and they should understand because they come here and they look at our budget and they're always here for the budget meetings. And if they don't understand that seventy-three percent of our MNO. Is, is taking the brunt of ten million dollars. So when we say that we have to hire employees, of course, and I understand. It's just because I say that we don't have adequate parks. It's, it's not a lie. It's the truth. It's the truth. We can't build them as fast as we can, so we have to try to do the best we, we can. And as a whole board understands that. And unfortunately, we understand best because. And, and, and anybody here can say. If I'm lying, we go through the budget, we put it out there, we put it on these videos, you can look at our backup and the numbers don't lie. We want parks, I get it and I understand, but you know what? We're gonna end up raising taxes just because we want these beautiful things. And yet at the same token, people don't want higher taxes. So what is it? Just because one or two people want them, I understand, but we have to be very frugal. We have to be and do our due diligence. To try to give a good quality of life without explaining to taxpayers. And if we can't understand that, then I don't know what you're looking at. So those are the issues that we have to face. And we, we have to do hard work and really look at the budget, look at our MNO. And look at our debt service so that we can see what is left and what projects the city is in dire need. So those are the things that we have to address and we have been doing a great job. And that's all I have to say is that, you know, I know it's tough for us to, to, to look at the budget every year and try to see what we can do. And I commend my board because I can say that, oh, I did this, I did that, but you know what? It's all of us. It's all of us. And I just wanna say that it's very hard for all of us to approve a budget because. Hard decisions have to be made. And unfortunately, you know, we, we are understaffed on parts. Yes, we do. But you know what? We're working at it. Slowly but surely, we're working on it.
Mr. Lobos?
Hey guys, hi. Mr. Escobar or Jobe, can you guys explain to me what type of park is a hundred feet away? What does the park have? And does everyone have access to it?
Yes, ma'am. The park that is nearby is Mauro Rosa's Park and it's right across the lateral. Yes, it's open to the public. It's a public park. It belongs to the city. It has a playground, restrooms.
Okay, thank you. I, I really wanted you to explain it for those that are out there hearing us so they know, you know, what kind of park we're talking about. Also. I, I think Mr. Escobar has been told repeatedly that we, we want parks here in Socorro for all our subdivisions. And. I, I don't think we've said in a while that we don't have the funds or we don't have the manpower. That, I think that, that statement was old. And I just wanna, you know, for those that are, are hearing is that we've evolved and we're moving on and let's, let's, let's do that. Let's all get on the same page and start saying. What's happening, what, you know, the new thing that we're bringing instead of, you know, reverting back to what used to be said. Because I don't think we're saying that anymore. Thank you.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevárez is absent. Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Pérez.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos.
Yes.
Item number eighteen, discussion on action on the final plat approval for Eastlake Valley Unit Two subdivision. Being all tracks nine, ten, twelve, thirteen J, thirteen J one, thirteen K, thirteen K one, thirteen L. And a portion of tracks two H, two G, five A, six A, and seven for a new development.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is a park that is locate, I'm sorry, this is a subdivision that is located off of Nuevo Waco Tanks Road. This is the outline of the subdivision. And this is only for the final plat. This final plat is going to be. Divided in three sections. The reason for that is because they, they don't fit in one page. This, what you see on the screen here, this is sheet one. And then here's the second part. This. Section of the subdivision is going to provide connectivity to the old Gricalva Gardens. All the way to Nuevo Waco Tanks Road. Right now, currently Judge Caldwell is going to be the main arterial and it's under construction. You should be seeing some roadwork happen next week. The developer is going to be connecting the roadway into the Nuevo Waco Tanks Road. I don't know if you have any questions about this one.
Mayor, we do have a speaker for this item. Can we go ahead and call Mr. Duran first and then we'll go ahead and call the speakers. Mr. Duran?
I'm looking at this and I don't see a park. This is second subdivision without building a park.
Yes, sir. The reason for that is because in the past. It was presented to council. In the future, there's going to be a new development on this area here. This is the only section in the city that is going to be a PUD, a planned unit development. It's gonna be a mixture of. Of residential and commercial properties. There's gonna be several parks within this new development. And in addition to that. According to some conversations that we had with a developer and council in the past. They were allowed to, and they were granted this zoning classification. With a condition that they provide the areas where they're gonna have the parks open to the public. And there's also going to be a bike lane along Judge Caldwell. That is going to run from north, from Moon Road all the way to Nuevo Waco Tanks Road. Those were the conditions that were imposed when the approval of the zoning change was presented. So that's what they're doing. The park is going to be in unit three.
You can call the speakers, Mr. Navarro. Miriam Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. Navarro. I wanna thank Joe for always doing a good job at presenting and having a lot of answers. I actually remember that about the unit three. My, my issue with that is that currently the houses are already being built along Eastlake. I was driving by the other day in the, in the subdivision and there is kids playing in the streets. Kids playing in the area where homes are being built. There's no park for them to be, to play. I understand that there is this agreement, but for future reference, I think this council needs to consider and staff needs to consider. But it doesn't make any sense because who knows what year. That's actually gonna get built and what year, not only is it gonna get built, but it's actually gonna be able to get used. This, this woman in front of you right now is gonna bring in two hundred and forty-some houses. So we have the first subdivision that's already being built with, I don't know how many homes. I don't remember. I didn't look it up. With a bunch of kids that I told you are already playing in the streets, playing in the, in, you know, homes that are being built still. You're gonna add two hundred and forty-two houses. Who knows when the actual park is gonna get built? So you're gonna have kids, more kids in the streets, more kids in, in areas that they probably shouldn't be because there's nowhere to go. I'm sure at the end of everything, I'm hoping, because we're never sure about anything, right? Because the developer is saying nice and pretty things and then sometimes it doesn't come through. They sell you this nice picture and then it doesn't come through. Maybe it's just a suggestion, but they still mention it. Thank you, Mr. Navarro.
Mayor, we have Mr. Escobar on the line. If anybody has any questions for him.
Well, I would like to comment that. Hello?
Mr. Escobar, what have?
Yes, I would like to comment about the parks. The reason that we moved the parks to phase three. Was because we actually giving three times the amount of parks that was required for those subdivisions. So the conversations were to give access through Judge Caldwell. From Moon all the way to Nuevo Waco with a bike lane and aligned trees on both sides. In order for everybody to be able to get to the parks, which are gonna be much bigger than putting little parks in, in, in the other parts of the subdivision. These are gonna be in excess of ten acres. As they're designed right now. And they're gonna be in between the commercial, the restaurants, the apartments. You have to understand that we're bringing something to Socorro that presently does not exist. And, and if you remember the master plan, and you all do because you all approved it, that is the next phase. The next phase will get started as soon as we finish, probably in December or January, phase two. So we're, it's imminent to start right after this subdivision.
Mr. Rodríguez?
Yes, and to add to that, we were having issues where people were building parks. So let's address the issue. We as council understand about quality of life once again, and I will once again address that issue. Because it's, it, it's very unfair for residents. This is what's been happening in Socorro. And we took it upon ourselves as the whole council, and if we remember back a couple of years ago, the issue. The issue was that builders were building parks and the subdivision wasn't completed yet. And what would happen? That on halfway between that, the park was already done, that it only has a certain amount of lifespan on the park. So that when we agreed on it, that we were already responsible the minute we closed that. And we, we said that that needed to change. So therefore, when we did this master plan and we were in discussion because all of us were there. We agreed upon that is that we were gonna push this back to the, the last phase because Mr. Escobar said, and which is true. He's gonna give us more than what we were asking. So that's great that the developer understands what we are looking for. And that's why he pushed it back to the end. So we do understand, we're working on that. Nothing's perfect. And like I said, you know, there's issues that we are resolving. And it's, it's, it's a learning curve. So we are doing our due diligence and we will continue to do it as long as we're here. Because we as the board understood that and that's what we're doing. You know, it's, it's, it's sad to say that, you know, oh, we said, yeah, I said so many things for the last seven years and you can't hold me to it because. Why? Because things happen six or seven months down the line or a year or two. And it changes the way we look at, at things. And therefore, that's where we're at, at this juncture. And we will continue to do and work with anybody that comes to the city and provide a good quality of life for our residents. Because at the end of it all, we all want quality of life. So thank you.
Ms. Mayor, Ms. Mayor.
Hello?
Just wanna mention a couple of things and I, it, it means a, a great deal that you guys understand that. The parks that were recently built are extremely small. So when you say three times for the development that is proposed for this area. Should be a little bit bigger, but not by much. And it's, it's, I, I really want council to start looking at the size of parks that the developers, developers are bringing into these communities. If you have not seen them, they are extremely small. I don't think we really. Reviewed the size of the parks. We were excited that we were getting parks in every, in every development, but the size of them. Is kind of like what I've heard, what I've been told, a joke. So we really, you know, in the future, we wanna look at that. I, I kind of agree with Mrs. Miriam in the, in the fact that. And, and we, Mr. Escobar, we, we thank you for coming into our community and trying to make it better. However. I agree. If the development doesn't happen, we have no parks in that, in that area. And so therefore, we are. Holding Mr. Escobar to it, but if it does not develop or if it doesn't fully develop, then there is no park. So just really got, want, want you to think about that. For the future. Thank you.
Mr. Duran?
You know, I've gotten a few calls about this and I think what people are worried about is. And I think what people are worried about is that, and it's happened already before, where a builder finishes building his houses and he leaves the park half-done. Uh, and, and I know that because it's going to be part of the apartment complex, that it's going to be hard to leave it half-done. But still, people are worried. I mean, you know, twice bitten, once bitten, twice shy. Um, they have a park already that um, got left half-done. And then the wind would blow and all the dirt would fly into people's houses. And we've seen that. We walked. We've seen all the dirt in the people's houses and we got left with it. And we don't want that to happen again. That's just what, um, you know, we just have to make sure that what is promised to the city will happen.
Rene Rodriguez?
Hi.
Cesar Nevades is absent. Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Hi.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Item number nineteen. Discussion and action on the preliminary and final plot approval for Maria Reyna Pinera subdivision being lot ten, block two, San Isidro subdivision at two twenty-one, Revelles Way, for a lot split.
We have a motion?
Second.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. There's uh, this one, this is an application for a lot split. This property is located on San Isidro subdivision on Revelles Way. They're just asking to split this lot in half because they want to build a second house next to it. As you can see, the properties around it have already been subdivided. And this is, let me just turn on this layer real quick so you can see how the subdivision is broken down. As you can see, these two have been split. And this is the fourth one that's going to happen within this block. So there's not a lot going on. They're just asking for permission to split the property in half.
Question?
Mr. Perez?
Uh, Joe, um, like I always ask, there, as far as the safety issues, uh, there's enough uh, for egress and ingress for the property and all that stuff that goes along with it?
Yes, sir. Yes, there's enough uh, frontage. We did verify uh, the measurements. They comply with all the requirements. Um, they have about seventy feet, almost seventy feet of frontage on each lot. So there's no problem with it. Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Rene Rodriguez?
You can hear me?
Hi.
Cesar Nevades is absent. Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Hi.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Item number twenty. Discussion and action to approve work authorization number eight, Nuevo Weko Tanks Road extension.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Good evening, Mayor.
Sorry, but. Okay, here we go. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council, uh, magnate city planner. Uh, what is before the body is work authorization number eight. This is the final in the series of the projects that were nominated to the MPO. Uh, so essentially here is that it gives us the authority to direct Danenbaum Engineering to start the uh, preliminary engineering along with doing the environmental assessment. Uh, and this project is uh, determined is between North Loop and uh, Alameda. If anybody has any further questions about this. And we're looking at a little over three point four million dollars uh, that is ultimately funded by the O.P.A.S.O. MPO. Is there any questions or comments?
Rene Rodriguez?
Hi.
Cesar Nevades is absent. Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Hi.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Item number twenty-one. Discussion and action on approving engagement with SBNG Certified Public Accountants for auditing fiscal year 2020.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, this is our, we just finished our fiscal year, fiscal year yesterday. So this is the engagement letter for our auditors to conduct our fiscal year auditing for uh, this last fiscal year. That's what you have in front of you. Do you all have any questions?
Rene Rodriguez?
Hi.
Cesar Nevades is absent. Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Hi.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos? Ms. Villalobos?
Yes.
Question is, do we have anything for items twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four?
No, no ma'am, but there is an item that's twenty-five that we need to discuss.
Mr. Dante, do we have anything on twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four?
No, ma'am.
Motion to delete items twenty-two to twenty-four?
Second.
Rene Rodriguez?
Hi.
Cesar Nevades is absent. Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Hi.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Does item twenty-five go into executive?
Do we have a motion to go into executive?
Motion made.
Say again.
Rene Rodriguez?
Hi.
Cesar Nevades is absent. Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Hi.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Okay, if y'all will just give me a moment.
Going into executive session?
Seven thirteen.
Hey, I just wanted, I
And we are now back in regular session.
Seven forty-five.
Item number twenty-five. Discussion on Action Regarding Request From Texas Gas Service To Approve Use Of Financial Hedging.
Motion to approve item number twenty-five.
Second.
Second.
Item number twenty-five, discussion and action regarding request from Texas Gas Service to approve use of financial hedging.
Motion approved, item number twenty-five.
Second.
Second.
Renee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevada is absent, Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Um, because it involves our constituents, I'm gonna say no.
Item number twenty-six?
And I'm sorry, we do have a speaker for this item.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, she did hang up, it was Miriam Cruz. She hung up.
Do we give her a chance to come back, or do we move on?
She's not on the line ma'am, so motion pass. Miriam's not on the phone.
Okay, item number twenty-six, summary findings regarding personal matters involving under five-five-one-point-zero-seventy-one and five-five-one-point-zero-seventy-four.
My, my motion, Jim, should be that, um, direct staff to bring us another motion and to delete this motion for next council meeting.
You can do that.
With a discussion and action.
Yes, that the direct staff to bring it back as a discussion and action item.
So moved.
Second.
Renee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevada is absent, Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
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 Renee Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevada is absent, Ralph Turan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Yeah.
Item forty-eight, Medina adjourned.
All right, bye everybody, be safe.
Bye.